Today is March 17th. It is 4:00 PM. We can go ahead and get our city commission meeting started. If I can get a call to order and a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Shirley?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Okay, if I can get everyone that's able to do the pledge of allegiance and stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards or proclamations today. Now is the time we could move to citizen forums. If anyone would like to come up and talk about anything that's not on today's agenda, now would be your time to do so. We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we can move on to the consent agenda.
Item number 6.1, approve the minutes of March 10th, 2014. Item 6.2, award of contract for 2014 asphalt mill and inlay, project number 14-3020 to APEC, Kansas, in the amount of $741,626.25 plus a 5% construction contingency. Item 6.3, authorize modification of agreements for the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Community Action for a Renewed Environment Level 2 grant with Kansas State University's Pollution Prevention Institute and the Salina County Health Department.
Is there anything the Commissioner would like amended or removed from the agenda? CNN, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Hold those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Go ahead and move on into administration.
Item 7.1, discussion of city commission board appointments and liaison roles.
Mr. Gage?
Commissioners, not too many weeks ago, you as a commissioner had talked a little bit about liaison roles and other board appointments, some of which are an obligation of being in the role of city commission, some of which are not. And you had asked staff to put together kind of an inventory of those. And so we have that together and we provided that for you. And what we've tried to do with it is to list, we kind of listed it by each individual commissioner, just in what board or committee that you were on and what your role is. For example, you see member liaison, those are the two options, whether or not there are voting rights or is an expectation to vote in that role. And then the enabling membership directive, in other words, what was, what caused you to be on that in the first place? Was it your own desire, like a preference such as being a liaison? Or was it some other policy or resolution or state law? And so we felt that hopefully that would be helpful in your conversation. And I think from that you could decide some things that, well, for example, you could come back to the liaison role, which is really the same, whether you're appointed or not. The appointment kind of puts an obligation of you to attend, but quite honestly, your role is that of any other citizen. So you could show, any commissioner could be at any city committee meeting at any time and your role would be the same in that way. So you don't have to have that. It's just been a desire and preference of the commissioners in the past. So we put this together and wanted to give you the chance to look through it and see if you had any questions. And if you want to make a change, it's certainly up to your discretion and we'd be happy to help you with that. One, I think, and I'd refer to Greg possibly on here if there's a question, the, it does show the role of the mayor on the Chamber of Commerce Board as a voting member. That's been in practice for years and years and years and is enabled by their policy. But there's a real question, when you have a contract, whether you should vote on both sides of that contract. So from a voting perspective, there's a question of whether or not you'd really want to exercise that or not. I'd kind of pass that on to Greg to see what his thoughts might be on how he sees that as a, I'd call it more of an informal conflict, not a statutory conflict per se, but what that would mean, because I'm not sure I could speak to that as well. But other than that, that's really up to you to discuss and decide if you want to keep it the same, make changes, whatever you'd like to do. And we'll be here to answer questions and help you.
Is there any questions for staff?
Yeah, in the past, were there other boards that, that were handled similar to this? I had heard that there was a liaison on Parks and Rec Board for, for a time. And a few years back, maybe that was pulled back. Was that, would that be accurate or?
Good question. I have no idea. I don't recall that. It's a possibility, though.
Okay.
Yeah, it would have to have been just a simple liaison role, I would think. But yeah, I don't know.
So basically, any of these are city policy. Theoretically, we could remove or?
Add to.
As long as we're not voting, yeah. This obviously appears all the city policy ones are no vote sort of ones.
Right. Yeah, when you go through them, really, when you look, for example, the Salina Public Library, that's a state statutory type role and that's specific to the mayor. So what that means is, is as a voting right of the mayor through state law, you can't have a substitute vote for you in that case. You go through, most of them are city policy or city resolution. You do find like North Central Regional Planning Commission, that is a governmental entity of sorts. And so there's a formality and a relationship in that role. And so we've always honored, because we're in that, we've always obviously wanted to have that board representation there. So it's, that pretty, that does align with our mission as a city and is dealing with another governmental entity. The Salina-Salina County Building Authority is in our local agreement, which obviously that's important because the, your role is part of that governance of the building. And yours and the county, and we have, of course, a district court representation and also the citizen at large representation. And so that one is formal in that way. And then the housing authority, and most of the others are just city policy, city preference for liaison roles.
I find personally that, that these board appointments are important. I know they help me in forming decisions. I'm on the, with the airport authority, I'm just a liaison. I don't have a vote on that one. But a lot of what happens there, I try to kind of update you guys periodically on some of the things going on there. But, you know, we do a lot of things with North Central Regional Planning Commission. And as Jason mentioned, there is a vote, we are a voting member on that board, as well as the Building Authority with Commissioner Crawford. Those, I find those are very helpful in kind of seeing the big picture and understanding those. And I know that some of the things that you, you guys have shared on the boards you are, I find very helpful, since obviously we can't all go to all of these meetings. I try to hit an additional planning commission meeting here and there when there's something They're all important, but particularly timely and, and things that, that might be a little more controversial or, or something like that, I try to hit some of those. But I'd like to hit more Parks and Rec Board meetings and so on. So I, I don't have a problem with, with any of these, looking at any of these boards. I do understand the one with the voting on the chamber, that, that kind of seems, and maybe Greg will address some of that. But I, the one that's off here, obviously, is the Health Department that Commissioner Hardy and Crawford were on.
Right, for obvious reasons.
Yep, so. But I'm, I'm fine with, with pretty much the way things are.
And I always want to, you know, encourage people at home to remind them that we always have openings on these boards. I know, I know some of us served on several of these boards prior to being elected and hopefully continue to serve on these boards after we're no longer in office. But people at home get involved with your city, get on some of these boards. You learn a lot and you do a lot of good for the community by volunteering. So just, I always try to encourage people. You know me, I'm always encouraging people to get on these boards. So hopefully my fellow commissioners are spreading the word and getting people involved.
I have a couple of thoughts on this. Are we at that stage?
We are.
Okay. Number one is the, there are a couple of boards, like being on the Housing Authority, it's interesting to me.
It is. It was, I was on that one, too.
The, if you're a two-year commissioner, there are several of these boards or commissions that you will not have exposure to unless you decide you just want to go. And I've done that half a dozen times this year, because I would look at the agenda and I'd say, oh, that's kind of interesting, I think I'll go to that. And I've gone to a CAD meeting, I've gone to convention tourism. And, and so I like the idea of being able just to move around. And, and also, the, one thing about housing authorities, it's interesting and it's a whole different world all by itself, but all the meetings tend to be a little bit repetitious. There's not a whole lot of variety that, that goes on from meeting to meeting. So if you've gone to two or three meetings, you've got a pretty good idea about what they're all about. And, and so I was thinking, well, for my particular situation, that it would be, you know, moving around was actually not a bad way to go. Now, of course, that leaves up the, the possibility that some commissions or boards might, may not get the same amount of attention that others would. But I was, I was treating it, I guess, in my way of thinking, as kind of a more of a demand, on-demand kind of thing. Or as my interest was piqued in something.
Any other thoughts or?
You basically just need an acknowledgement that we've kind of received this and done it like anybody wants to make any real changes at this point, just, just kind of.
Maybe add.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to take any action if you don't need to.
Well, I think maybe with the exception of the first board there, the voting on the...
Right, have Greg look at that, just to check the...
Sure.
And Commissioner Blanchard, are you looking to be interested in a Parks and Rec liaison or?
No, I mean, I, I think if it's something that, I think if, in looking through here, I think that, you know, when we look at things like a rec center and adequate parklands and upgrades to facilities, I mean, the buy, send, and tenor is a big thing now.
It'd be good to be at those meetings.
It just seems like if we're going to have committees on here, that that might be one that we want to.
I agree, I agree.
Look at, so.
I'm a little surprised that it's not on the list, frankly.
It's the Atlanta Parks and Rec, that's, that's a big department. And I think a liaison on that one would be good. Not to undermine any, any importance of the other committees.
Well, I think that we could probably add that in the place of the former Health Department.
Right, I think that would be a great idea.
Okay.
I was on it for 13 years, so.
Just what those guys wanted.
I know.
Wanted us sitting in on their meetings, yeah.
I didn't think it ought to be a voting position.
Well, absolutely, no, it wouldn't be.
It wouldn't be because we vote here, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, on any of the liaison boards, your role is, just as a citizen attending would be, it's to attend the meeting. It, if they, most of these boards have no reason to be in executive session. If one by chance would, your role is not to be in there, because again, the typical citizen cannot. So it's truly just a citizen role. But certainly we could, and I was looking at Greg, because I couldn't recall if we established the liaison board list by our board resolution or not. We can check and see.
That was originally the case, but I cannot speak to the history of the Parks and Recreation Board liaison precisely enough to shed any light on that.
I do see Dion back there squirming. If he, any thoughts or recommendations, Dion?
What's the food like at your meeting? Brad always has really good food at his meetings, yeah.
Yeah, they do, they do.
Yeah, they always got, yeah, yeah.
The only thing I might mention, if I may, is, as you can probably tell, the thing that we're watchful for from a legal standpoint is the duality of office question, to be sure that, that's why you're not, none of you are put in a place of, of voting on any boards or that would make recommendations to you as a Board of Commissioners.
Right.
And frankly, that same logic, taken one step further, I've not observed you all, but it is actually best that really you not even express an opinion in that setting. Maybe that's the way you've all approached it. Because there is the concept that any indication of the position of a particular commissioner may very well be indicative of the Board of Commissioners as a whole, as those bodies advise you as a board. So that's another concept to keep in mind, that, that, you know, while you may low-key your presence, you're still a city commissioner and obviously, anyone there would defer to any observations that you might have. Potentially, in a way that, that would undermine the, the autonomy of their recommendations, if that makes sense.
Well, I have a question about that then. I was at, I went, I attended a library board meeting and one topic they were talking about was germane to what we were talking about, citizen engagement. And, and so I would, as I would see, hear things, then I felt like, well, this is a way to add to the discussion or to clarify or, you know, to encourage that kind of thing as well. And I didn't, so I don't know.
What you just described, I wouldn't think is problematic. My, the only thing that I, the only reason I mention it, just in case it wasn't anything you might have had reason to process, is you can imagine, there could be a setting where one of you could influence, if you so chose, not saying you would, but if we're, since we're talking about the subject here, we have to be careful that you're not obviously active and actively involved as far as a voting member. But an extension of that same logic that's recognized in the law is that, that you would not want any one of you possibly influencing their thinking or somehow giving them the impression, not that you would intentionally, but if they just inferred that somehow you were speaking for the commission as a whole, then it could influence the autonomy of their recommendation.
And that goes for any board that we sit on.
That you're not voting on. So it's a good, it's a good thing to preface everything you say with, speaking as a citizen.
There you go.
Well, I think it's better probably to just not express an opinion.
Yeah, yeah. But I think informational, sometimes it's hard not to, because I think it, it comes out and they'll, like, like in your, in your instance, where you said they're asking about citizen engagement, things like that, I would think it would be difficult not to say, yeah, we've discussed that too and some ideas we've thought about were. I think it becomes almost, I mean...
That's a very natural part of the conversation and obviously not intended to influence their...
Influence, yeah, just feeding maybe information of...
No, that's certainly fine, I think.
So do we need to add that we may want to put that on, on the list, the?
Parks and Rec.
The Parks and Rec? Need that, I think, some kind of motion or...
Well, if it is by resolution, wouldn't already the Health Department be on their Health Department Board and so we'd almost have to just substitute?
The Health Department was by virtue of the inter-local agreement. So I don't expect that it was addressed in the resolution.
Yeah, if you can, I would say if, if that's the only action that you take out of this, just a motion to ask staff to explore the approach to including Parks and Rec Advisory Board as one in which you'd have a liaison role. And we will bring that back to you. And if it's a resolution, we'll bring a resolution. If it's just an action, we'll do that.
Okay. Is this a public thing or no? I'll make a motion if not.
Oh, let me, is there any, is there any public comment on this matter? Parks and Rec? No, good. Okay, guys, I just want to make sure, make sure you're included.
All right, Madam Mayor, then I would move that we direct staff to look at replacing or placing the Parks and Rec, a liaison for Parks and Rec on the city commission board appointments.
Second.
Just for discussion, why would it be different for Parks and Rec than it would for Arts and Humanities? They're on the list for liaison. So, I mean, would there be any difference in the fact that they're, would be the same as what Greg was saying, that it shouldn't, also, we shouldn't have an opinion there? Is that correct?
Right, this would be a non-voting.
Just to be a liaison, okay?
Yeah. That's what I understood, yep.
Any other, any other discussion? No? I had a motion and a second to explore the possibility of a liaison onto Parks and Rec. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, that motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, resolution number 14-7085, amending resolution number 97-5138, establishing a purchasing policy for the city of Salina, Kansas.
Mr. Franz?
Brad?
I only get to say that for a couple more weeks.
I know.
Darn it. I was getting so good at it, too.
You notice I walked up carefully balancing my pad so that those texts wouldn't turn sideways and confuse me. Purchasing policy we currently have in effect was originally adopted in 1997. I remember it very well, because I remember struggling getting it, getting it written at that time. It was largely, at that point, a compendium of existing practices that were not documented in any discernible format. I mean, we had individual policies and so on, and, but they weren't very, very unified. Section 3 and 4 of the policy refer to the threshold value for capital items that are required to be included in the sub-CIP. That same threshold values is used to determine the administrative authority of the city manager to authorize purchases without prior approval of the city commission. That has been set at $10,000 since that time and since, I'm going to say an unknown period of time before then, because it was 10,000 then, nobody seems to know where that number came from or when it was developed. At any rate, that is now worth, and purchasing power, a good deal less than it was, was then. And so the suggestion is that it be increased to $20,000. Does a couple of things, is it expedites acquisition of needed materials in a timely way without cluttering up the commission agenda with lots of smaller items. The same procedures, or similar procedures, I should say, with respect to acquiring written bids or verbal quotes, still apply to these purchases and it, so the competitive practices aspect stays the same. It's just a matter of the approval process that is different. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is that what would you, what generally would be a typical expenditure of this type at 10,000 versus?
I just, actually, I just saw a draft blue sheet for next week for a piston-type sludge pump. Okay?
Sweet.
Which I think is coming, which is coming in at $11,000. The low bid is, and that will be on your agenda next week if we don't pass this. Now, it's something we're going to buy, it's something we have to have, it's something that wears out, there's a known market for it, and so it would be just, you know, a lot more efficient just to be able to get the bids and go out and buy it, rather than to prepare the explanation and the blue sheet and run it through the full process. There are some things that come, come close to the threshold, some of the smaller vehicles we use, some of the, what are they called, off-road, you know, the little, I'm going to use a brand named Cushman run-arounds, they might sometimes go over that threshold. You know, when we, when we purchase things that are, you know, $7,000 a piece, and we're going to buy four of them, that would still come to you, because the total is more than, and we discourage breaking purchases up to, just to avoid the, the process. So, so that it's not an attempt to sidetrack that at all. But there are a number of things, and a lot of them are things like the sludge pumps that are, that are just kind of fall into that uncomfortable range. Most standard vehicles are now exceed $20,000 in value. I don't know, I suppose a compact pickup or something like that might be, I don't know if you can get one for under 20 or not anymore. But...
I mean, did you used to, did we used to buy some of these vehicles that way? When, I mean, did vehicles, I mean, when we're talking now about buying vehicles that are now under 20, I mean, did we used to?
They, they have always been bid if they're more than $10,000. And, and it comes, and it comes to you for approval.
Okay. I, I only have a small problem and some of it's in the language of the contract and it's probably, I'm sure there's an explanation for it, because I'm not an attorney. But I read through the general part, and you had mentioned briefly gone over, it says that staff involved in purchasing are expected to use common sense and good judgment in the application of these guidelines. And then under the competitive bidding part, it says, competitive price quotations, written or verbal, from at least three vendors are encouraged.
Yes.
So there's a, there's a bit of vagueness in there that doesn't suggest a policy that says there will be...
There, there is a little bit of flexibility there and, and that is because we buy lots of different kinds of things. And for example, when Martha buys chemicals for the water treatment plan, for example, always the same thing, well-known specification, specified number of vendors. Typically, they will, I believe, maybe she'll correct me, they will call and get, get verbal quotes, simply because tomorrow the price might be different. You know, it's a very, it's very much a commodity kind of item. Very seldom, I would say, is that we, we purchase something where we don't get multiple quotes. Sometimes there are sole source things that, you know, only this particular brand or model will do. You run into that even on things we bid sometimes, is there's only one, one answer.
Mr. Franz, Martha wanted to correct you.
Okay. She says she gets written. But, you know, there are times when we do, when they will take verbal, verbal quotes.
Makes sense. The whole, whole purpose is efficiency.
Well, right, the, the purpose is efficiency and I get that. And so another question I had on my sheet here was that, is this the product of a CPI type vetting that says, you know, we can eliminate some of these steps if we?
No.
Okay.
It's simply a matter that it, you know, it's been a, what, 15 years since it was adopted and, you know, what was now, what we're buying now for 10,000, we were probably buying then for, you know, 6,000 or 7,000 dollars. And so it was just a matter that the, you know, the, there are fewer items that are meeting the qualification.
We could kill less trees.
I was going to say it was attempted to shorten our meeting is what it was intended.
And I like that, but I do understand that, I mean, we get a lot of those on the consent agenda, because they are kind of a go-through.
Routine thing, yes.
What you're talking about more is preparing the whole blue sheet portion of that thing. And, I mean, I do see that our role is, in this process, is very much, right now, is oversight. And I see as part of the policy that, that that gets placed on the two of you, city manager and finance. What do we have, as far as we have, I mean, we don't see the number right now that's under 10. Is there, is there a place that that is, that we can kind of go and see currently? I'm sure there is. Not that, and I say this just from, not from any sort of suspicion or conspiracy, you know, but just from a transparency standpoint, that if we're going to give up this little part, we know that, that there is a fallback, too.
Yeah, I'd have to refer to Rod, because I would imagine you have a report you can run.
You know, anytime you and I can run your report on things we bought that are more than $10,000 and it's, or that are less than $10,000. And it will be extensive.
Okay, because, yeah, I see the part in here about encouraging, and the policy to encourage the bundling whenever possible. And that's just the thing for price efficiencies and...
Keep in mind, Commissioners, the encouraging is your directive to us and really is to me, as the, in essence, the chief purchaser, the person that's responsible for all that purchasing, a city manager. And I think they'll tell you, I, I make them go, I make them look at competitive pricing, we're, we're pretty tight. And sometimes there'll even be questions about, well, can you explain to me what we're going to use this for, what we need it for? So we're pretty tight with those purchases. And I recognize this policy transcends time, but we're not really changing the policy part, we're just simply updating the number. So the policy part is still in place. But, and Rod takes a close look at those purchases, too, and occasionally he'll say, hey, Jason, did you, did you see this? And we'll talk about it, get with the department head and get kind of an explanation of what their need was. And so it works pretty well.
Okay. I guess, and also, I had a little bit of a concern about the amount of thought that's given to items over $10,000. I, there's a lot of work that goes into it. And, and so I'm thinking, so, well, if you have something that's under 10,000, you might not give it as much thought or attention. You'd say, well, okay, it sounds good, I'm in a hurry, go ahead and do it. So I'm, that, the, that's the part I like, is, and if, if you're giving everything under, say, the $20,000, that same kind of scrutiny that you were giving, giving to it while you were preparing a blue sheet, then that would also make me feel more comfortable with it.
What do we have, just in general, not, not part of this policy, but just to make sure that just everything is completely above board and we don't have someone saying, well, I know a guy that's selling this and it's under 20,000, so let's just get him, get him a little, throw him a bone. him a little, throw him a bone."
The purchases were, in essence, decentralized in most of our purchasing, which means that it happens at the department level, and many times there's consultation, again, with Rod, because the first thing they're looking at is their line item, "Do I have money in my budget to do this?" And if not, "What about this line item?" So, they're always having that conversation about the third quarter, fourth quarter of the year. But, those purchases go in, Rod's financial staff has the ability, which they do, they look at purchases all the time. So, if there's something that would stand out, they'll usually see something, and then, again, that's when a question would be, "Hey, Jason, were you aware of this?" And we may, you know, decide that, "Well, let's get with the department head and ask, well, what was the need, or what was this specifically for?" Because when you look just at a purchase in the computer, you can't exactly, it doesn't tell the story, so we want to get the story, and so we have that ability. And certainly, the auditors look at things when they pull their sampling at the end of the year as well, but really, my confidence level is more in the internal staff over there that catch, occasionally catch something and say, "Yeah, we probably ought to ask them about this one, or ask them about that one." But, quite honestly, any time I've been here, there hasn't been, I can't say there's been a purchase where I would, would say, you know, we were truly, well, maybe a couple exceptions, outsider's scope, where if we did, we brought them back to you, or something like that, tremendously concerned that we were totally away from a public mission, a public purpose. It's usually more of a value of, "Well, instead of that, why couldn't you have thought of this?" That's really more of what it is, it's a judgment.
You know, I will say that the departments do call me fairly frequently about something, saying, "Should we do this? Should I ask Jason, can I just do this on my own? Does this need to go to the commission?" And we'll, you know, we'll come to some sort of decision on those items, as to whether they can proceed, or whether they have to get further permission to do so.
Yeah, the parts I, the, just the parts that I find important are the, that we're getting competitive bids, not only that we're getting the most for taxpayers' money, because $20,000 is still a lot of money.
It is.
And, and just so that we know we're spending the money wisely, but also that people are out there that are trying to sell us what we need and so on, that they feel like they have an equal shot as well, and it's what they're able to provide, and maybe not who they know, and, or at least have that perception. So, as much as we can kind of, kind of keep things transparent and keep trust there, I think, I know that all of us up here are avoiding headaches by, by attention to that, so. And I appreciate, I haven't heard any complaints about the 10,000, so I really wouldn't expect too much different in updating this number.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Franz. I have to laugh every time I say that, I don't know why. I know, I never do, I never say, I never say, I still can't say Dion's last name.
Four-letter name with 30 pronunciations, yeah.
Is there any public comment on this matter? See, and then I'd bring it back to the commission.
We approve Resolution 14-785, amending Resolution 97-5138, establishing a purchasing policy for the city of Salina, Kansas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five-zero. We have no development business, so we can go on to other business. I do have one, a quick, before we move on, on other business. I just want to let everyone at home and the commissioners and staff to know that March is Traumatic Brain Injury Awareness Month. I suffered one five years ago in my motorcycle wreck, where I fractured my skull in two places, and I think people should educate themselves on these kind of injuries, and, you know, understand and support their family and their friends on these kind of things. And also, thank the paramedics that saved my life that night, which was Saline County. So, that's all I have for other business.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick, sort of congratulatory note to Salina Downtown, Inc., on their first annual pub crawl over the weekend. Over 400 people participated in a pub crawl downtown Salina, nine different establishments, I'd name them, but I'd forget one, I'm sure, so, find someone with the T-shirt and look on the back of it, and they're all there. But, it was great. Melissa Rose Hodges and Penny Betels at the Downtown staff did an amazing job, it went off without a problem, and that's great for a first-time effort. I'm sure there'll be a second annual next St. Patrick's Day, but just the effort that they put in, and many volunteers, I saw many members of the, visit Salina staff down there, and just everybody that participated, great, and it, the report was, everybody was well-behaved and no arrests were made, so, hey, that's always good, so congratulations, everybody.
Any other business?
Great, I get the joy of doing the executive session here. So, Madam Mayor, I move to recess and to executive session for 60 minutes, to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:35 PM.
Second.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry. No, it's my fault, I wanted to quickly interject, that one of the topics does involve a trade-secret financial information aspect, so I'm sorry, we should also be under that category as well.
Okay, I'll just start over. I would move to recess and to executive session for 60 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matter, and to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation, for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation, and reconvene at 5:35 PM.
Second.
Do we expect any action today?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are in executive session.